Sorry, we can't hear anything. You're muted.
Hi. My apologies. Thank you very much. So council, I just apologize because when I got the report from from Ms. French, I got so excited about presenting it that I kind of went ahead and did it, not realizing Northland didn't want me to do it. So it's kind of the same thing, but they might have enough information.
I do. I have more exciting information than numbers. Um, then there, and council, thank you for having us again. This, I always call this our state of the trash address, um, even though it's annual review time. Um, I will go through, um, did people get a copy of?
Yes, we heard my trip.
So, um, I, you did not present this, right? You did the rate review.
I gave him that. Okay, you got that.
So I'm gonna run through the PowerPoint, which touches on the rate review. If you have specific questions on members, I'm happy to answer those. Um, but I do touch on some of the more, um, generic numbers, I guess, or general, not generic. So, um, I think everybody knows who we are. We've been around for a very long time. And, um, we are excited this year. And Lexi represents the third generation of our company coming back. She came back in June to help with mostly, um, all of the new recycling, um, mandates that are coming down the pipe, which we'll chat about. Um, but I think we haven't been a bit drinking from a fire hose. Um, the biggest expense changes this year were, um, our employee CPI increase. We actually did a little bit higher than the, the regular CPI this year because we did quite a bit lower than CPI last year. Um, I don't know if you remember, but last year was almost a nine percent CPI and we did a five percent because we just couldn't afford to do any more than that. Um, and I hate to bring it up, but I'm sure everybody remembers last year's huge rate increase that we had. So doing a nine percent increase last year just would, that was a no row. So we did an additional, um, half a percent this year over CPI for our employees to try to get them back up to, um, in line with, with where they should be. Um, you can see what our, our, our drivers are, um, paid very well and they deserve it every time they get, they, our crew is top notch and we want to maintain them. So we compete with you guys as a city, Lincoln City, and so we try to keep our wages in line with, with public works and, um, people that we think we would lose our, our drivers to. Um, our disposal costs continue to rise. That is due in part two regulation, um, on the landfills and just their costs going up. So our costs go up by CPI each year with the landfill. So that cost will go up every year. Fuel costs, unfortunately, I don't know if you recall, I came in February and told you how I really missed the mark on last year's budget with fuel. We anticipated an eighty-seven percent increase and then fuel ended up actually going down. Um, we are continuing to see it rise a little bit now, but as you can see, um, the average is significantly less than it was last year. So that, those are the three drivers in, in rate increases. Um, depot bay this year, um, hopefully you know that you're not getting a rate increase. Um, here are only jurisdictions that's not, and that is due in to a lot of revenue coming in from this area, drop off revenue. So it doesn't take a lot in depot bay to shift the needle one way or the other because you are so small. A big expense can really drive up your rates. Revenue can, can hold your rates. So, um, that's why we're holding the rates this year in depot bay. So your rates are not changing. Um, curbside and carryout pickups, I think everybody knows that we provide either roadside service for a reduced rate or we'll walk up to your house, empty your three cans for you to replace them where we found them. And there is a, a, a higher rate for that, obviously. And we want to keep that rate, um, at what we call a cost of service so that people that have vacation homes, we can service them, but they are, are paying their fair share for the time that it takes for our employees to do that. So we want to provide that service. We do quarterly rate, um, and road studies. So we, we, um, track time and disposal in all jurisdictions quarterly. So we know how much time it takes to pick up the average carryout. We know how much the average thirty-two gallon can weighs, the average sixty-four gallon can, and we do that quarterly so that when you get your numbers at the end of the year, they're a good representation of what we're actually doing. Um, the great news is that we continue to see a decline in disposal and an increase in recycling challenges, which this is the second year in a row that we've hit that. And this is the first time in all the years that I've been doing this that I've seen that two years in a row happen. So, but we're almost to a trend. Cause you, one more year and we have a trend. And then mixed compost, we're, um, we're seeing those numbers rise as well, which is a great, um, I expected to see that because a new program obviously takes a little bit to get going, but we, um, saw almost a ten percent increase over last year. So that is terrific. Participation levels continue to be excellent, especially for our area with so many second homeowners. Um, but they do participate. But our lowest participation is obviously just people that are almost full-time vacation rental homes. They have a hard time keeping contaminants out of it. So they will end up calling us and asking us to take those cans away. Um, we have a few exciting programs, um, going on in the commercial compost world. We, um, we started out with the new Pelican Brew Pub asking us to compost their spent grains from the beer. They've been doing that in Pacific City. They knew how to do it. Um, so that was a very simple one. We provide a roll carts. We pick up their spent grains. It works great. Samaritan North Lincoln Hospital came to us at the beginning of the year this year and said, we would like to start composting. And we were like, uh, and they said, no, 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 just in our kitchen with our employees, um, doing, and so we did a fairly extensive education plan with them. Everybody was on board. And they have been running a successful program since the middle of March. And then, um, I believe we have another brewery in Lincoln City.
Yeah, and Salashan wants to.
And then Salashan wants their kitchen to join as well. So, um, we, we have to release these pilot programs because we are not permitted by cities or counties to do full, um, commercial compost. And we are not paying a commercial rate at PRC where we call our compost. So if it's a pilot program, they will allow us to do that. But the second we go full blown commercial, our rate goes up by almost fifty percent. So we want to stay with that. Um, diversion from other programs, the biggest one that we are working on, and we talked about this last year, is lithium ion batteries. Um, the, the damage from lithium ion batteries is in the billions now, with a B, um, from fires. And there are several transfer stations in the state of Oregon that have to self-insure now because nobody will write insurance for them at their transfer stations because of fires from lithium ion. They just burned too hot, too quickly. Um, Lawan was just on the phone with a company this morning that does heat sensing cameras. For one of those cameras, it's forty thousand dollars and then it's seven hundred dollars a month for the monitoring. And so it's like, I don't think we're there yet. We are still fortunate. We, we have insurance coverage in our transfer station. Um, if we get dropped, then we may have to go to something like that to be able to get insurance. Uh, e-waste, um, continues to be a very popular program. E-waste is what we call, um, a covered electronics program, meaning that you pay a disposal fee when you buy any electronic and then you can drop it off for free, just like a bottle. Similar to the bottle. So it's a, it's a prepaid deposit. And alkaline batteries, we accepted the recycling center. I was just talking to Lexi about this tonight, that you can throw those in your garbage. There's, there's really not anything too harmful in them as far as being in the garbage. And the last item on alkaline batteries, the recycling that's being done on those is the metal ends and the fiber, the paper that is actually wrapped up. And then, but we're gonna double check on that and see if there's, uh, if they're actually recovering the, the minerals, um, and elements in those. Um, the next page is our yard waste and organics program and then the recycling program. Um, the things that we accepted the recycling center that we don't accept at the curb for free. And then the things that we accepted at the recycling center that we don't accept at the curb, but for a fee, propane tanks, CFL light bulbs, which fortunately we're seeing less and less of those. So, um, these type of lights have a drain on, so we can't dispose them in the garbage. And so, um, but we're seeing less of those as people are switching over to LED. Our bulkie item pickup is, um, still extremely popular. And I think as things get more difficult to dispose of, people are thankful that they can call in and have it done. Um, we do that every Wednesday and then we do a scrap metal pickup every Friday. And so, um, and that runs all the way through our franchise system. Two years ago, then, oh, sure.
So how is that charged?
Um, so bulkie item pickups are per item. Um, so like a mattress is X amount of dollars, a recliner is X amount of dollars. The scrap metal pickup is a flat ten dollar fee. So you can have as much scrap metal out there as you want and it's a ten dollar fee.
And we'll accept them scrap metal for free at a recycling center. Um, if it doesn't work for you, so you can sell all of those as well.
Two years ago, um, one of the updates to the, um, Senate Bill sixty-six, the recycling, um, bill in Oregon was that we require, they now require us to present to them what our contamination education plan is. Meaning what are you doing to educate your clients against contamination and recycling? And we took it a step further in compost because not everybody has compost. So, um, Lexi is working, we, we have a really robust and always have had a really robust contamination plan. Um, I think most of you know that we've had three strikes in your out policy. And then if you lose your roll cart because of contamination, you can come to our office and take a test and we will redeliver your roll cart. And the idea behind that is this to show us that you're not using your recycling can as an extra garbage can, that you really do want to do it correctly. Um, so we send out those letters. We, we try to do educational tours, um, for all of our jurisdictions. Fran went on a ride along with our recycle driver a year ago.
That wasn't that long, probably.
Okay. Anyhow, and so, um, we love to take people out on the route to see what's going on and then to see what the recycling looks like when it gets dumped at the recycling center and available to go to market. Um, so we have, Lexi's position is, um, partially the education for that. And then, um, one thing that Lexi's really good at is social media. So, and we have found over the years that our social media is by far the best way to communicate stuff to our, uh, customers. And we get, if we send out a flyer versus a Facebook post, it's not even close of, of the feedback we get on those. And then, um, you may recall that we have our own app. It's called North Lincoln Sanitary. Um, and it looks like this on your cell phone. And all you have to do is type in your address. You get reminders of your recycle pickup day, your garbage pickup day, compost pickup day. And then, um, there's a really handy called a Waste Wizard. If you pick up anything, a tissue box, you can type in tissue to the Waste Wizard and it will tell you what can to put that in, or if you need to call the office for a special pickup or if it's something obscure. Um, we have also updated our website. Uh, Lexi did that as well. And put our, you know, new and exciting events on the front page. So you're not looking at the same thing that you're looking at on the website. Cause I know you all look at it really briefly. So, but it does have, you know, upcoming events that we're involved in, like you were involved in the can mine out down here, which is super fun. But, uh, different types of, of events going on, whether it's like, oh, we just had a big tire collection event this weekend. Um, upcoming education, um, we continue to meet, um, be a member of the Lincoln County Solid Waste District Party has been on that with us for twenty years.
Yeah, both IP and.
A long time. We're not gonna name either one of us, but, um, we recently, um, were invited by the city manager to be a part of the Lincoln City Sustainability Committee. Um, and so that is, um, a nice informational place to get information out. Um, we continue to speak at Rotary's in Kiwanis. Lexi is a, a board member of the Association of Oregon Recyclers, which is where all of the legislation comes from originally. Um, I, I think we talked about this last year, that we had an idea to start source separated recycling at multifamily and condo complexes that had lost their recycling because of contamination. That program has a hundred percent success rate. So we continue to reach out to those multifamily, um, and condo associations that have lost their recycling, try to see if, if they're willing to give this program a shot. And once we have instituted it, we've had no issues. So, um, the one thing I will say is that the ones that, that have participated, Little Well Cove was our first one. Um, and they were very invested in getting their recycling back and they have a whole little committee and I shouldn't say little committee, but they work really hard. And so, um, they've done a great job. And other, um, properties have, have done the same. Um, we are working on getting back into schools. I don't know, Autumn probably remembers, but years ago, we had a program, a state program called Oregon Green Schools. And they were a great partnership for smaller companies like ours and smaller areas like ours to have, um, recycle programs in the school above and beyond normal recycling. They have moved away from recycling and are focusing more on water and energy, um, different sustainability options. But we are working with the school district to try to get somebody at the district to, to be the head person. Cause what happens is you go into the schools this year and you have a teacher that's done coal and you get them all this stuff. And then at the end of the year, you find it in a dumpster because that teacher is leaving and they don't have anybody to replace it. And so we were repeating the same thing over and over again. And so we're trying to get buying from the district to, to push it down to the schools. Um, what's next? Probably our most exciting news, um, if you were to ask my husband, is our new transfer station. I don't know if anybody uses our transfer station off of Spooner Creek or Drift Creek Road. Um, but we are going to be closing the public transfer station up on the hill. And we have built a huge new facility down at our private transfer station. We've installed scales. Um, and it, that building is going to more than double the space that we currently have. And what that will allow us to do is separate what we call petrifiable waste from construction and demolition waste. And that petrifiable waste will be able to be called to Juno. Does everybody know what Juno is?
Yes.
Maybe? No?
Um.
So Juno is a program that, um, the Koch brothers started through GP and they actually, out of anywhere in the world, they picked Toledo, Oregon to put their pilot project for Juno. And that pilot project has been very successful. I believe there's eight of them being built around the world now. Um, Juno is a very small scale for what they are going to be doing in other areas, but it's plenty big for our small county. And they take petrifiable waste, stuff in your garbage can. They put it in this giant gobstopper machine that looks like a large autoclave, for lack of a better term. They add heat and water and some proprietary gobstopper mechanism. And they pull all of the fiber out. They pull all of the metal out. The plastic turns into, it looks like plastic baseballs. They don't have a market for that, but they are working on a market for that. And then they can also pull out the organic sludge. And so if they can find, the fiber is about forty percent, but if they, and metal, so we have markets for those too because they did it because they want the fiber. The, the other stuff is bonus. Um, obviously the metal is easy to recycle. If they can get the plastics and the organics going, they're talking about a ninety percent recovery rate and that's on your garbage can. And so, um, that's a big deal. And I think it will turn the recovery world on its head. Um, so we have not been able to haul there because we don't have any way to keep construction and demolition waste out in our trailers because our tipping floor is too small to sort it and too small to hold it off on the one side. We have to push it as we get it and give it off to the landfill. So this building is twice as big. So commercial and construction and demolition will be on one side. Petrifiable waste will be on the other side. All of that will go to Juno. So we're excited about that. Where is that school? Uh, at the same place that our, our private transfer station exists now. If you can, this is a tiny, tiny, well, actually.
Turn it across the street from the.
So if you look at this slide, this is Anderson Creek Road. And this, these two little tiny squares right here are existing buildings. So you can see how much larger this is. It's going to be paved and nice and clean. So people that are taking their, you know, truck load up or they did a plant for the weekend out there, you don't have to worry about getting disgusting and dirty. Cause it's real dirty right now. So, um, that covers the next two slides. Um, the recycling modernization act, Lexi just got off of a committee meeting this afternoon that I was listening to. It is a huge revamp of the recycling in Oregon as we know it. Um, the basics of what's happening and where we're at is, um, Kimberly worked with us last March, six months ago, to turn in a survey to DEQ that, that is going to be turned over to what is called a PRO. And a PRO is a producer responsibility organization. So basically what Oregon has said is that everything that comes into the state of Oregon that is recyclable, the manufacturers have to start paying for that to come into our state. Because recycle markets are in the toilet. It's very expensive. Uh, we pay more to get rid of recycling for a ton than we do garbage. And Oregon has said, you know what? If you're gonna bring that into our state, you need to help us have a system to get, to get it to, back to a market and to help provide markets for it. So that's what the producer responsibility organizations are. Um, I just saw a email today that there has been one organization that has come to DEQ to say, okay, we think we want to participate. Tell us what it is that the local governments want and we'll see if we want to play. Um, and so they, the DEQ gave them a few local governments to reach out and contact. So, hypothetical, let's say depot bay said, we want glass collection. We would, we partnering, um, with us and you, we would go to the PROs and say, we want to do a glass route in Lincoln City, or we just want collection depot, more collection depot, whatever it is. We come up with a cost. We go to them and say, this is how much we think it's going to be and they would provide funding for that. So that it would be less of a cost. It wouldn't be completely free to the rate there because they're not going to do ongoing costs, but they will do setup costs. So maybe they would pay for their roll carts for glass. Or maybe they would pay for more glass bins. Or maybe they would help us buy a truck that's split body. So we can pick up mixed recycling on one side and glass on the other. Those type of things. So, it is a bonus. Um, there's a lot of backend reporting and, and stuff that drives our costs up, but we have to play the game. So the bonus is, is that if we decide that we want to do something, pick it, I don't know, but there, there will be funding now to, to help with that. Um, this is kind of a pet peeve of mine, but DEQ, um, adds stuff to what they call their covered items each year that has a producer responsibility attached to it, which means that, um, it's like electronics or like paints. So paint for the last, what, five plus years? It's probably ten years if I think it's five years. We have been paying an advanced disposal fee of seventy-five cents a gallon for paint. And then we take it at no charge. It gets sent to Metro and remixed into recycled paint. Um, computers are the same way. You pay an advanced disposal fee. We take it for free. We haul it to a recycler. They recycle the computers. DEQ decided to add mattresses to that list because they said they're difficult to dispose of. That was information to us. We've never had any problems disposing of mattresses. We've picked up mattresses for thirty-three years alongside a company and long before that. Um, and they make great sleepers for the transfer station floor with excavator. But now we have to provide a, a separate drop off for them and put them in a, a van trailer to be recycled. And the only recycling facility that I know of from is in Georgia. So the only thing I think that they're going to be doing at this time is pulling them apart, taking springs out, which there's not, not a lot of mattresses with springs anymore. And then trying to figure out a way to recycle the textile part of it. Out of all the thing, like, why isn't lithium ion batteries on this list? That was my complaint, but again, we have to play the game.
I think what it will do is it will have more consumers, hopefully dispose of them and in correct ways. Kind of like tires where we give the tire drop off because we don't want them to end up in people's yards. Same thing with recycling. Sure. That's close.
Um, recycling market update. This is kind of the bad news. Um, this is a month old and it actually, we just got, um, September's update and it's a little bit better news, but the value of recycling, um, is down again today's price. So this is exactly a month ago is eighty percent less than a few months ago, which means we pay more. Um, in the Pacific Northwest, uh, demand for domestic paper mills is down significantly. West Rock announced the closing of another mill in Tacoma effective September thirtieth, which creates more softness of the paper market. Uh, metals were flat to slightly down. So they continue to, um, we have two different metal plants in the state of Oregon, um, that we haul to Cherry City Metals in Salem and then Schmitzer Steel in Portland. And then, um, domestic consumption of these materials, um, which is paper, is almost non-existent. Consequently, we ship most, oh, plastic grades to export markets, which is the one that really bothers me. And I think most of you have heard me talk about us shipping our plastics to, it used to be China, obviously, but then we just changed it and started sending it to India or Malaysia. And they're not doing anything different with it than what China was doing with it. And so that's why it is something waterways and you see children playing on piles of plastic. And so, um, I would like to see that change and bring that back to a domestic market. Um, but that is probably the key. So that is all I have. I'm sorry it took so long. There was a lot of information to cover. Any questions?
Uh, yes, you, um, are holding our sludge from our sewage treatment plant. Um, how's that going? Is that not going up any cost either?
Uh, no, that rate stayed flat this year. Well, it went up by CPI.
Okay.
Um, just like disposal did. But, um, we, we direct bill you for that. So you actually, we charge you for the, the haul and, and we, we pass, we don't mark up the disposal at all. So, um, that is a, a direct bill. So that is a direct bill.
And where does that go? Is that going to the landfill?
It does.
And is that landfill going?
So that's Coffin Butte Landfill. And they, they have had a little bit of a pickup in their expansion plan. I see it going through because the alternative is for everybody to go to Arlington, Oregon, which I think everybody knows how far away that is. So I, Lon and I have sat down more than once and tried to figure out, like, how do you even do that from Lincoln City? Like, that's, one load a day is more than full-time for one driver. And so we have five to seven loads a day. So what I'm thinking is we would have to do is have some sort of satellite where we haul our trailers in a large trucker like Walsh Trucking or May Trucking or KME Excavating would pick them up from there and then take them the rest of the way. We would have to pay for that. So it's not a great alternative. And I would think that Benton County would, and the other counties, would, would put the pressure on to, to make that expansion happen.
When do you think you'll start using Juno?
We're hoping to open the transfer station in January. My husband would kill me if I said that out loud because you know how folks are and how construction is these days. But the plan is, I would say, buy, buy spring out of twenty-four.
That'd be a huge goal. I was able to tour that.
Oh, good. It's pretty bassy. I highly recommend if anybody has the opportunity to go down and see it, which they have tours all the time for different groups and you can hop in on any of them. We can also set up for you. And we can set up if you want to see your group down there or, you know. And, and I don't know if they'll do it for one person, but anyhow, they're, they like the show out.
And I thank you also for the tire drop-off. We kind of dropped.
Yeah, oh, good, yeah. Tires are a great example of a difficult to dispose of item. They're banned from the landfill and we don't want them in the landfills. And the reason they can't go in the landfills is because they create air, and air is what creates fires.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you. Tina, first of all, thank you to you and Lon. Wonderful operation. And we're very grateful to have, I'm very grateful to have you as a provider. We have a fish pickup down on the south side of the harbor. It really, at times, reeks and, and it's bothered some of the residents. And I notice it's also terrible on the, on the facility that you run because when it's dumped, it just stinks up the, this wonderful, wonderfully clean, well-kept operation you've got. Is there a better way to do that? Is there a better container or is a better way to process these fish carcasses?
Not to my knowledge. I, I, Lon and I were down a summer ago down at Rogue Brewery. And I was like, what is that? I was looking across it and it was their fish carcass container. But there was a sea of maggots, a hundred yards across the parking lot. And the pavement was moved. And I was like, watch. Anyhow, oh, disgusting. So this one.
Can you get a picture of that?
I did not. I should have. I honestly turned on my heels and we went somewhere else. But I, the, I don't know how to make it, because how many times have we, we dumped that three days a week in the summer?
Three, yeah, so like three and then also on call, so.
So what, yeah.
During tuna. But we have been using some enzyme and it's, it's been helping.
That's why I was gonna say, I know for our leachate, which also is putrid. We have an enzyme that we buy to sprinkle on our floor because in the, I mean, it's the summertime, right, that it gets so bad. I know, you know, we pick it up at, it's our last stop of the day before we head to the transfer station because then the fish can just sit on top and not ooze out. And we try not to, I think part of the problem is, is what we're dripping on the parking lot after it's dumped, if the lid is. And so that's why we try to leave the hopper full of absorbent garbage, dump the fish on top of it and head straight away to the transfer station. So I don't know if maybe there's something we could, is it, is it just the container or is it the parking lot area?
Yeah, the fish curry does get around the dumpster. But we've been spraying the enzyme foam. We've got foamers now, so we're really making a, a point to try to address it. It has been working. We've got the Corby Harbor Master, been working with our Harbor Master and utilize it there, that product they have. I mean, it's, so far it's been working. It's better, although, you know, I think we, once we figure out a better application, I think we'll be okay, like, in the dumpsters itself.
Sure. The other thing I was thinking of is going to smaller containers and having them picked up four days a week or, you know. Because if it's fresh carcasses, they shouldn't be too sneaky.
Right.
It's, and, I mean, I don't even think three days a week they wouldn't be too sneaky.
No.
It's.
Yeah, it's got the hops, huh?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you.
It's your reason.
So let, how long have you been using that enzyme?
Um, yeah, so it's June, I guess, and May, June.
So let's maybe evaluate that for summer and then see. And I'll ask around too and, and see what other harbors do.
Orton Seagram puts out a book annually that our quest would be in there. And I several, several of the cities have them. I think you have a hot topic on it. Anyway, they're just really kind of cool. And if you want any more information, I can provide it in my crotch.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
There are questions here.
Yeah.
Can I ask you?
Sure.
So Orton Seagram usually has a person designated for these different programs. Is there a way to delegate having Orton Seagram person assemble such a thing for our town rather than us having to dedicate time to do that?
I think we would have to put the material together for them. But if the committee is interested, and I think the committee members would be going to do the work on that, or we can be all under it.
And then they would do training about it? Or just have it on the website?
It just would be on the website. We could pass it out here. Uh, Rob Mark said he could, it's something that he would be going to share with his hotel guests. And we could share it with our, you know, one of those things where it's like, hey, look what something's really doing in Deco Bay. Want to learn how to be safe while you're here? You can go here and read this information. I'll, um, I'll provide one at a sample at the next, next meeting so you can kind of see.
Appreciate that. Our next meeting is October the ninth at four thirty. And we were not able to have a presentation from Mara Roche with her vet project that is deployed to Maui. But we hope for, to have her talk to us again about safety issues for, for the coastal area. That's all I have. Any questions for Joyce?
I have a question for her. Thank you, Joyce. Well, important. My concern is I would just like to see something that would be solid progress. I think of the caches that we're, we're getting. And, you know, timelines, I'm getting those ready. And how many people are we going to feed in the event of an emergency? To get things on the ground so that if, if something were to happen tomorrow or this winter, and we've had these things happen, we've had fires here, we've had tsunamis, we've had, if everybody remembers, a decade ago, we lost our electricity and our gas in One Falls, whoop. To get ready for these things as soon as possible. So rather than, you know, pursuing grants, putting our time into that, which, you know, we should have some kind of a go-bag campaign. We, we need to get our silent situation figured out. And I would like to see personally a law requiring, like, our lodge organizations to have go-bags for everybody. To be, we need some kind of legislation to, to get people involved together. So those are my thoughts. Let's just keep pushing forward.
Any other questions for Joyce?
Thank you. Basically, I know that the first step that I see is to get the containers. The council, they're working on that. We have a list of things we want to purchase when we get to containers. It's a, it's a, it's a process, but we are moving forward with it. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Um, I have a restoration. We don't really have anything.
Oh, we do. We're going to be doing that just later on. Like we had the open bids last week. We'll have a report later on that.
Okay. The Houseless Committee has not met, but when you are going to be meeting, we still have an ordinance that we need to have public hearings around. We're trying to get all that put together. But I do want to bring you up to date on the Lincoln County Homeless Advisory Board. They have finished the five-year plan. And they're going to Ernest Stevens from there is their consultant. And he will be coming before us to present a five-year plan that they put together. And he'll be asking us to pass a resolution to accept this, so. That'll be coming. Anything from the Harper camp? No. Are you doing the Harvard list? Okay, my Harper. Okay.
We have a meeting next week.
Oh, okay.
We'll be meeting in, so we'll get some information. But did you talk about the one fee for the daily lunch fee? Boy, the one fee.
We didn't actually add it to. We need to add it to the next.
Okay. So it's a surprise. So you'll find that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Hi, name, Ruth. Did you have?
Yeah, just a couple highlights.
Okay, sure.
We, we recently approved a conditional use. Could you come?
Oh, sorry.
We re- recently approved a conditional use permit that the city applied for for the parking lot on this avenue. And it, because the previous one had a lot. And I'm still working on the quality of life code amendment. There, we talked about the draft tree ordinance, but that's kind of been on hold. I think that there's a HPA recommendation that we want to see what the effect of those can be. I think you guys should talk about that later, yes, this meeting. And then we also are concerned about kind of the future of the plan, the numbers of the people of the planning commission. Right now, there's seven spots. We have five people. Two are slated to retire in the December. And, you know, we keep trying to promote new applications.
If I may, if I might.
Oh, you've got a new application today.
Oh, great. At the council meeting on October fifth, we'll be presenting an application from the planning commission from Mr. Zipbeck.
Wonderful.
Oh, good.
That is standing today.
There used to be nine people on that commission.
And, you know, I know that there is a talk about decreasing the numbers of people, which may be a necessity. But I speak just for myself on this. I worry a little bit about that. You know, we don't win up the broad perspectives, broader perspective with less people, you know. Thank you, Ruth. Anything from Parks, you say?
I think, excuse me, Mary.
Yes.
I think we have a meeting a week from March.
Uh, next Wednesday.
Oh, next week.
So we'll, we'll have an update then.
Okay. Thank you so much. And Sam, I don't think anyone's here concerned.
Sam's on hold also.
Sam's on hold also. Good. Are there any public comments, you say?
I don't know. I told Kim, right? That's one of these, I don't know what else you want to do.
Um, I just know one year, again, it's not what we're voting on with the crap pot issue. Sorry, I'm tired. I don't have any voice, so I'm worn out. But I'm here because I'm very passionate about this. And I just really want everyone to consider this crap pot issue. How important it is to the likelihood of our community. Perhaps when we get the new docks, we can look at it again, but now, but we'd like to see of what would have confidence to keep those pots in there. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments?
I'm just a bit alive.
No, we're going to be discussing this in a few minutes.
Well, this is on your issue. When I was county commissioner, I created a fund for your cash issue. I, I, I wrote the original book on San Antonio, which Japan, that's a fisherman. But if you check with the county emergency services, there was a grant created when I was there. It supplied that. I think most of the information of what you need in your cash is also there.
We have all of that.
You've got it?
Yeah, we did get the grant, sir.
Oh, you did? Good, good. That's why I was worried, because you didn't act like you had.
Yes, we're on top.
Are you current tops?
Yeah. I think I was.
Thank you, Terry. Moving on, unfinished business. Come on up, Todd. I think it's your turn here to. Tell us about serving our population. And thank you for stepping up to volunteer for this. Appreciate it. You've lived in Deco Bay for a couple of years now?
Yeah, it's about a year and a half.
About a year and a half? Okay, good. And is there a particular park that you enjoy more than the other, or? Besides our one beautiful city park?
Yeah, I used to go down and walk over there and take walks through here. Major Park.
Good, good. Well, making some headway with our engine, I'm trying to get some bridges right there. So did you want to share anything with the council about your visions, or?
Just wanted to get more involved in what's going on and.
Wonderful.
Help where I can.
Okay, you're just going to jump in? Sounds good.
Over time.
Over time.
He, he is on the salmon and he has my question.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, all righty. Wonderful.
I'm trying to fill in the marketing and help out.
Oh, I think that's comfortable. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Todd?
Where did you move from?
Where did I move from? Uh, well, I moved a few times, but we were down in Moab, California.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, please.
Todd, thank you very much for applying for the commission. One thing is, I don't know if, have you been on a parks tour yet? Had a chance to look at our parks?
I've seen two or three.
I, I think that if you have a chance, and I'd love to see your committee do this, is, and anybody else would like to go on a parks tour, just so that we're on the same page about what challenges our parks face and what your job is going to be. There's a lot of park repair, a lot of deferred maintenance right now. And we need our, our, our Parks Committee to be real focused on that and to help us determine what we have to do. And also, and I'll say this now because I won't, you won't understand me at a Parks Commission meeting. I don't think city councils should go around in the dark of the night talking to committees about what they think they have to do.
That's a good point. Do we have a gentleman, a woman, of these areas?
Didn't hear a remark mentioned.
Yeah, I spoke to him, believed it.
But one thing that I would, wouldn't mind saying, in our parks, is adult exercise equipment. You know, there are firms that put out prison wear that allows you to do push-ups and sit-ups and pull-ups and things that keep us, as we get older, in better shape. And we need that stuff.
Now, you mentioned that, yes, because I don't know, I'm in LA, there's a couple parks that had this park stuff. I was like, oh, that is so cool.
Yeah, absolutely. We need it. Mayor, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. We're here to fill out a balance check.
Here you go.
There's a hanky chat.
Oh, what?
Yeah, my hanky chat. When they voted, this property. Got it?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. You are hired. Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the balance as presented?
How about you make a motion to accept the balance?
It's been moved and seconded to accept the balance on the exhiling. Any opposed? So we get, I guess your meeting's next week.
Where is it?
Your city hall at noon. But I'll, I'll send you. I'll send you that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we're going to do, discuss the crap pot storage under this decision and direction. And I think we've heard all the testimony, we've had the workshops, we've had everything. At this point, I think I would just like to make a motion to continue the storage of the crap pots on the docks, on the old docks, with the stipulation that we make every effort to find a place to store the pots when we have new docks in place. So that's my motion. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any eye to keep the pots on the docks? Is there any discussion?
Yes, that's some discussion. I would like, I don't, I personally don't think it's our job to find alternatives. We heard a lot of good ideas in the discussion last time. And I would rather, see if it would be a friendly notion, I would like to set the date certain. And that would be before the start of construction of new docks. There's an end water, end water work period, I think it begins October first of next year, and that's the end of the crap season anyway, where pots have. Because I think certainty, I know nobody will like this, but certainty about needing to plan for this is a lot better than leaving it up in the air for, well, maybe the city council will allow us to continue after the new docks. I think if people knew that they have this year, and there are alternatives. They might not be as easy as the existing way they handle it now, but I think there are alternatives. And I'd rather give a date certain where there's no more crap pots on the dock. So people know that they really do have to find alternatives. So I don't remember how you worded that, but I would like to say until September 30th of 2024. And if the work window doesn't start, I mean, if the bids don't go out, I mean, if the people don't start construction and as of April 1, or whenever the crap season is allowed again, we can revisit that. But I'd like a date certain now where we no longer have crap pots on our new docks. And at the start of construction anyway, that would be at the beginning of the work session. And when there's no crap pots on the docks anymore. So a date of October, September 30th of 2024.
I can imagine that to include that.
End what our works end up. End up in November. As of April, start in November.
Probably, that's October 15th.
October 15th. Let's make it October 15th, 2024. Okay, October 15th. Thank you. Change it. Any other discussion on the motion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty.
Thank you for that, Mayor.
Yes, um, we have a request to dedicate the city hall. Are the ladies here? Uh, Susan Sawyer?
You have that letter?
Community Hall.
Community Hall.
Oh, the community center.
The community.
So I guess we'll delay that until the committee here to tell us.
I don't, I, I think we could move forward if people feel comfortable with that letter maybe in the record on page 51.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, I, I think it's pretty clear cut that we either want to get it done unless you want to delay for some reason.
I don't know. I thought they would be here to tell us. I'm not sure they're going.
They don't let local.
Thank you. Oh, they don't? Okay. Then.
They weren't here for our reunion.
Okay. Well, this is not a local request then, so.
Except from here.
Yeah. I, do they like Ms. Martin to provide some information on this, or? Well, that's fine.
I mean, they were at, they had a classroom meeting at the community hall.
Oh, okay.
And that's where the discussion came up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're all the people that went to school, they're in Deco Bay school. And I'm thinking that maybe they didn't know that they were supposed to be here.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure. But I just was made aware this afternoon about this request. I would say that my brother loved that community hall. And he picked time on those days off to go down and sand floors and keep the nails out and really show that community hall a lot of love and care. So I thought it was probably a nice gesture on Ms. Martin's, really hard cut.
Yes.
Yeah, and I might be a little biased, but I agree. I really liked the idea of a nice gesture to Pogo.
Yes. I would just like to just throw out a slight caution that if you allow the dedication of city property, the line you really might have to decide whether or not you would have to consider. You could get more requests than that, so you would need to evaluate each one based on some.
This is just asking for a brass plaque.
I think him has a good point, because we did say, you know, no more benches and stuff. But I think this is kind of a special case, and yeah, and maybe it does open the door to other special cases. But I'm, I'm prepared to deal with that. I think this is a fitting tribute. And this is a long-term family that did go to school here. And I remember Pogo on his time off doing work in the community center. So I know it opens the door, but I'm, I'm prepared to having to deal with other applications.
Did you have a question?
I did, Mayor. Thank you. Then we're talking about is right here, Pogo Robinson. I was privileged to write his obituary, where I learned a lot more about him than I had known in the 30 years that I've known him. And I, I think absolutely he deserves recognition. But I think we're going in the wrong direction here, and we're moving too fast in the long. I remember, and not too long ago, there was a move to dedicate a park to that time. And discussed a lot of angst and controversy and arguments one way or the other. Frankly, I think that we should have a way to honor the titans of our community, the people that founded our community, and to do it on a widespread basis. So that, you know, we have to consider names like, not just Pogo Robinson, but Fred Robinson, practically invented the charter of history. Gracie Strong, who was very closely involved in the founding of our town. Just Bob Jackson. The list goes on and on. And to just, I, I think it's absolutely appropriate to do this. But I, what I would do is I would go along with this. If we said this plaque is dedicated to the memory of Pogo Robinson and posted it down there. And even a more appropriate place, I think, than that's, that, that community hall. And I would ask that maybe the sponsors of this consider that, is our flagpole here at city hall. Because as I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, Ruth, Pogo had a, you know, really put his back into the erection of this flagpole here. And there have been many people, in fact, that have been a part of that community hall and have dedicated their work and their volunteerism to bring it to where it should be today. And I wouldn't want to discount those by saying, you know, this is now the Pogo Robinson Hall. But if we could, if they wanted it down there and they wanted to put a plaque up to Pogo, God bless him, I'm all for it. But let's not name the building after him.
Yes. Um, I, I think that's probably a good point. Because I was not in favor of dedicating a park that they didn't want to do it, or the whole park to person. So having like our memorial wall, but those dedicated to, you know, founders of Deco Bay, a really important history, might be more appropriate. But I don't know, is plaque dedicated to the memory of Pogo Robinson? Maybe we should ask for feedback on that, or since this group is willing to pay for it. But I'd be interested in hearing from other side of the field.
I think in memory of Pogo Robinson, maybe ask his ladies what they think of that and then make a decision later.
I like that idea. Because he did work countless hours there, and that was his building. He loved it. And I love it too. So we, I like the idea of a memory of Pogo and then the date. So we'll contact these folks and get back to you. Does he, is that, are we concurring? Okay. Oh, tobacco again. Yuck. Okay, sorry, I was my first smoke. Okay, um, resolution 545-23. This is from the state, sends this resolution, and we just doctored it up. So the city of Deco Bay. So has everyone had a chance to read this? Is there a motion to accept this resolution as presented? Resolution number 545-23. Resolution in support of restricting the sale of flavored tobacco products and protecting kids from a lifetime of nicotine addiction. Is there a motion to accept this?
Yes.
So I'll move. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to accept this resolution as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Discussion?
Yes.
You know, I'm pretty much for this. Because I, you know, how could we disagree with the idea of selling these candy flavors? And if this 25% of tobacco retailers inspected, sold tobacco underage buyers is astonishing. I don't know why those people still have a $1,000 license to do this. But I, there's two things that we, that bother me about this. And I, and I would go along with this just with a slight change. And it has to do in the last paragraph, where it says the sale of flavored tobacco products. And then points out minty menthol. You know, in my mind, this is just, you know, besides virtue segment here. This is a real cultural issue, because, and I've known this forever. In 1969, they used to give us boxes of C rations with cigarettes and a five-pack of cigarettes. And we traded them. And our brothers always went for the menthol. And I, and so I've always known that, that it's a cultural deal. And I went online before this meeting and found out that 85% of African Americans who smoke cigarettes, smoke menthol cigarettes. And it just seems inappropriate and insensitive to me, even though it is a cigarette. We don't like cigarettes. We're against tobacco. It's like going out to a person of color and slapping a cigarette out of their mouth and saying, you can't smoke that anymore, but you're going to have to smoke straight Camels or Virginia Slims or whatever the surgeon general says white people smoke. So if we could just eliminate that one part about the menthol in there, I'd feel good that we weren't just exercising our white privilege.
What is everybody want?
That's news to me, but thanks for looking into that. I don't have any problem with starting the minty menthol part up a bit. It was a big deal to you.
I don't even know if we need that last sentence at all. Pass legislation ending the sale of flavored tobacco products, period.
Just eliminate the whole, you know, that last sentence. Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Uh, Cook Avenue. Oh, one of the work rates.
Oh, no, that's next. I'm sorry.
Um, okay, so we need to set a public hearing date. When do we want to do that?
Take the direction of the council to move is to.
Take the direction of the council to move is to actually have a public hearing basically saying to the homeowner, we're going to contract with somebody to remove these vehicles and put it against their property. The deputy, the sheriff's, they're not having any luck. It's just absolute refusal to do anything. The homeowner claims various reasons that they've been claiming since late last year. The council hasn't given them to the end of December. You know, with things going on, it's been allowed to go much wherever you want that. I spoke to our council and they can serve something, but it doesn't feel it will make any difference. So he believes that with our ability to address that with having the cost of the event added to the property taxes, you know, the property when it sells, is at least a way to address them.
We've done that successfully.
Yes.
Um, is there a timeline in the, for the public hearing? I mean, how much notice do we have to give?
We should probably give her at least seven days. I believe that is what's in there, but
Because we've, I mean, we've already done this, so we have to have another public hearing?
This is actually to order the abatement. This is a direct order of the abatement.
Okay.
Not just, you know, move all of that staff or do things. This is the actual order to say, city, go and get this property cleaned up. We, I have been working with our deputy because there are other homeowners on there that are parking their property vehicles and we cannot enforce on one without enforcing on others and he is addressing that. They are aware of that. Brady, uh, one of the public works supervisor met with the homeowners, one of the homeowners in particular. I had confirmed today from the deputy that there are at least three vehicles that are these particular homeowners, maybe four. The other vehicles belong to the homeowner that is from, really from Utah, that doesn't have a driveway, but our public works supervisor met with them and
They're gonna try to get right there.
They're gonna try to get something going.
One of the neighbors, if I can, also parks out on the road because they are trying to prevent the problem from blocking their driveway. So they put vehicles out there to support that.
And our deputy said he's talked to that gentleman and each time he does, the gentleman puts it right back in the driveway. So he knows, oh, he's not really an issue. He has a driveway. He just puts it there. He just puts it there to block it.
Can I?
Yes.
Can I ask productivity? So I thought all those vehicles on the east side of the road have been removed by this property owner.
And was that anymore?
They're gone.
A more.
They went away and then they came back like next weekend. So the only other thing I would say is that, you know, this, this there's a lot of reasons for all these problems and that we do have some funding from the county for abatement of vehicles in the public right of way from Lincoln County Solid Waste District. We got five thousand or something.
It's ten thousand, excuse me.
It's ten thousand for a car, but that has to be an abandoned. This is a separate, this is on private property. They
No, it's on the public right of way, right?
It is on public right of way, but recall the council decided at the time that that was to only address abandoning vehicles. Abandoned RVs. It's an RV.
It's an RV.
And it can be for other, so let me tell you where I'm going. I would just like to soften it a little bit for the mental wellness and for, I know it's probably, you know, we're we're beyond our limits with this property owner, but saying that something to the effect that the council will do what it can to minimize the cost of this abatement, something just a little bit softer and I don't know. I'm just
How can you talk about removing garbage from your program?
I know, it's charged.
The first thing, right, the first thing that we would do is just simply send the notice of whatever hearing date that is. And then, and then between now and then, I can check into the county program to verify whether or not that is actually part of the program.
It is. I've gone to some of their meetings, so yeah, it would be good to verify. I don't think we have any other vehicles or RVs we need removal right now. And it's only on a first come, first base, third basis until they run out of money. So the D. Popay can access that money, I think. Anyway, I'm just feeling a little bit like
How long would a public hearing have to last, Kim?
The captain owner? Yeah, I, it would, the answer to that question would be how many people would come to either speak for or against it?
Oh, okay.
Because you would have to allow public comment, including from the homeowner and so I, I would don't have any idea how long it would take.
I think we should have our sheriff.
I was just
He will say that he will be, I will discuss this with him. He will serve the papers. He will come to D. Popay's space city hall afterwards and then he will be here that night.
Okay. But could we have the same date as our city councilman either before or after?
Um, sure, that's the council.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be a separate date.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Do it.
You might as well do it right now.
Okay, all right, so next council is October second?
Third.
Or third?
Sorry.
I personally won't be here that day, but I can call in.
Oh, okay. Okay. Don't we already have something before meeting on that date?
We have regular training, thank you.
I can't agree anything we have before that.
Okay, so set it at five thirty, public hearing?
What do you think? We don't have enough time?
Five o'clock. Okay, public hearing at five o'clock on the third.
I got a quick question. So getting a contractor to come in and clean up, is it just the vehicles or the garbage that's on the right of the house?
Yeah, the garbage. There shouldn't be anything on the right of the head.
So do you want me to wait? To start, because I was told a few times, we had a very difficult time finding a contractor the last time we did this.
Yeah.
But we did find something. Just don't know if you want me to kind of put feelers out to see if there's possibly a contractor near it that would be stuff like this.
Yeah, let's get on it.
I do also want to mention, I did speak to Lincoln County Behaver Lab and unless that person actually seeks help, there's nothing that can be done.
Okay. All righty, we'll just have to move forward then. Okay, so
Public hearing, excuse me.
Yeah.
I would like to, if we don't really need to have it at five when we can, but you know, we have limits on how much time people have to speak. So I don't think, even if we have a few in favor and a few against, I don't think we would take that much time.
Okay, can I say five thirty? We're gonna change it to five thirty then. Yeah, I'm gonna turn my baggy. Okay, moving on then, we also have a resolution this evening that removes a bunch of past stuff here. Resolution number five four six dash twenty-three. It was resolving, resolution designating code enforcement officers for the city of D. Popay. Has everyone had a chance to review this? And so is there a motion to accept this resolution as presented? It's pretty self-explanatory. It would give the Lincoln County Sheriff's Officers and Sheriff Deputies, the City Recorder, the Public Works Director, the City Planner, the right to do public code enforcement.
Question. What, I guess I don't understand what the position would be of this particular person.
High decision.
Well, no, but say if they, would they like knock on the door of a camper, say, can't park here? Is that what we would do?
It definitely depends on this scenario. If it had anything to do with parking or any high road type enforcement, we would have our deputy do that. That's why he's listed at it. The things that we might code enforce is, for example, the work I've been doing on the Famine Hill, the work I did with the billboard, the work I do checking out the harbor down at the, things like that. The work that Brady would do with other things. So it just, it says that, okay, well, we're just enforcing the rules from the ordinance, it just gets slightly better to do that. And our city enforcement is doing so.
Yeah, it's often professional with someone, the person giving the warning.
So would this authorize individual city councilors to walk around and enforce?
Yes.
No, absolutely not.
I think it's just those.
Just in closing, that's it.
Yeah.
Um, okay, is there a motion to accept this resolution five forty-six dash twenty-three?
Still.
Is there a second?
I'll start with that.
It's been moved to a second to adopt a resolution designating code enforcement officers for the city. Any discussion on the motion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And then we've got our, this is the best thing of the evening as our engineer gave us the this assessment of who we should go for with, is everyone had a chance to review this?
Yes.
Okay, so basically it's just a matter of making a motion to accept the bid from Advanced American Construction that we have received and our recommendation that were engineers.
I'll move that we accept the bid for American engineers. Advanced American, excuse me. Four point one three eight nine.
Okay.
Awesome.
It's been moved to a second to accept the bid from Advanced American Construction as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Yay, gosh. We put a lot of work into this.
Yeah.
To get it this far and I really appreciate it. I'm really excited. It's gonna be such an asset to our whole, our whole city.
Just three bands there. So we'll get this contract.
Actually, the way this works is we have to send out a notice of intent to award to Advanced American. All the people visited, they have seventeen days to protest. Once that's done, then it's an enter association.
Oh, okay. So is that seventeen days from tomorrow?
Seven days from whoever the notice of intent to award is.
Seven or seven days?
Seven.
Seven days, oh.
And I'm not sure at this point if PND is sending that notice out or who we love, so it should, we should go out this week to go like.
Okay.
This review, this is really helpful.
Oh, was that fabulous?
Yeah.
Amazing. Good thing we haven't hired enough.
It was great to have five people submit bids because there's kind of a lot of people doing waterworks right now, so. Sorry to butt in, but it's really exciting and exciting that we have the funds to do it and do it the right way. Awesome.
Um, project updates from Brady and Kim. Did everybody have a chance to review what's going on in the city? Any questions with them?
I just wanted an update on the part releases. Did you get a chance to
I spoke to attorney. He said he's not setting the rates. He said that's not up to him, that's up to us. So I think on my project updates memo, I said that we could, I put that information together and maybe include it at the work session at the end of the month. But yeah, he said I don't set rates, so.
But didn't we already direct him to set rates consistent with the port, new port rates? We didn't ask him to set rates.
I just thought you did consistent, or to look at the market rates. That's what I believe the market.
Yeah.
Who is looking at this stuff?
Well, what we would simply do was pull the rates from the ports, new port, everybody who has stock.
And we'll take a look at that.
And then you would take a look at the work session and decide what kind of, you know, what do you want to do.
Right.
Will that be discussed at the harbor commission as well?
Yes, we will. If, I would like to say it would be ready by the fifth, but we'll, I don't think we'll have something to be ready next week, but we might. Before the harbor.
I would ask that it is. And then
But at least the work session, we could
Yeah.
And then the harbor commission certainly join that work session here.
And then, excuse me, one question about that regarding the surveys of the docks regarding where city's property is versus private property. So they, so we have that information in front of us at the work session as well.
We do have one that's very cool regarding, well, eco excursion that part that dock have been issued. Ours is not officiated and not even, it's state.
It's state, yeah. It's a, there's a, I thought it was their, obviously it's been so long ago since we did the ransom that.
It's state and state.
Yeah.
So we couldn't dictate, well, I don't know what kind of anything they have with her on that, but I'm not sure.
Well, maybe, but we had that area long before this oil excursion, was other processing plants and stuff and it's probably also the city property is the face of the cliff where the stairs go down. There must be other areas because we did charge for years for for rent.
But wasn't Ann Walton Sam? Didn't she buy all of that?
I don't know.
We'll have to look at that. I thought my history from being explained by Carla, they said she bought all of that. So we don't really have, is what I understand, we don't have any state of her docks. But we had clarified.
There's some history.
Thank you.
It's similar for other, other properties as well. The Peter property, the Trayman's property, the
Yes, some of that is really, yes, just this certain state goes around the channel and around, just around those docks and then ends, just past her dock, the state.
And our, whatever, and city lands are.
It's like encompasses the whole thing, all the other docks, everything else. That's the only area that has the dotted line of the state. If you look at the interactive map of Lincoln County, you could go to a catalog and then it'll show Google Earth with the property lines of state, right, of the state lands. It's easy to get. You get the twenty, I think twenty-one version of the Google Earth.
But of course, there's always disclaimers, don't
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
But since we had charged in the past until twenty sixteen, I think it was, or twenty-six, two thousand and six, I forget when we last had a lease. There, I don't know what has changed. It probably shouldn't, nothing should have changed unless there was a sale between those dates.
I'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Um, any other comments on the project updates?
I have a, I'd like a question and it has to do with the financial end. And it has to do with the concerns that I have about our accounting software and its inability to provide financial reports or what the problem is or if we are attempting to tackle this problem. So I'm hoping that maybe the city recorder can give us a report at the next meeting.
I can basically tell you right now, the system isn't currently capable of putting that type of financial report. I was going to provide the revenue expense to record this time, but based on when I entered information, I had to fix something. I just ran out of time. The system has an limited number of reports and a balance sheet is not the one, not one of the ones. I don't know why they've decided that, but I can give you an account activity report that shows everything that's come in and everything that's gone out. At any point, that's easy to do, but saying it wants to consolidate it. There's no plan to fix it because I'm hoping and I'm waiting to get an update on my new software that will move there, but there's no plan to fix it. I do the report manually and I will make sure I have it put on here, but it's an actual report that's going an account activity, a revenue report, it pulls them all together. The system just doesn't see that.
Yeah, I just don't know how we can do our audits if they don't have, you know.
They do the audits by using the general ledger, which is essentially the account activity report. And they create what they need from that.
What about the new software? You say there's new software.
The new software actually has a financial.
And is it, when are we done?
I don't know yet. I'm hoping you're back coming soon where we're at on the this. I don't know yet, I'm hoping to hear back from them soon, where we're at on the list, because they're very busy, so they schedule you for timeframes when the implementation team is ready, and I'm waiting to hear when they're made for that.
Have we paid for the software?
Yes, they've already paid for it.
The cities paid for it. We paid a bit of town payment on it, we've not paid it on the full that way.
I think you have, I will double check, and I think just what I'm paying for.
Oh, okay.
They're not charging us the annual fee that, you know, the maintenance fee or any of that stuff until we have it implemented, but I believe it was paid for, but I'll, I can double check on that, I thought I looked at contracts and saw that.
Do they have a, you say they don't have a date?
No, they're checking with their implementation team to find out where we are in the queue. We can sign up for this soon, yeah, when I went through this in Northburg, it took a year to advance from seven to one. Takes a long, it'll take, we'll be in the transition, it'll be in, it'll take us four months to go through it, or five months.
And we hope to have an audit first of October, okay, so we're gonna add some ending figures. Okay, um, legislative updates, everybody's been reading the HB twenty-eight oh five, I'm sure, enjoying all this and everything, so it's just an update for us.
It, well, I just want to make sure that one of the things that we'll do is, I highlighted some things that I wanted, because it's a very long one, and it's very boring and hard to say, but I highlighted the things that have changed, and the specific things that have changed is that. They're going to start requiring um council to be trained once a year, or when we take office. Um, they're focusing a lot on defining what deliberation means and serial communications, which have all been talked about before, you know, so it's not, League of Organ Cities in their training has been doing a really good job of adjusting serial communications. But one of the particular things that I thought was interesting was on page sixty-three, where they talked about communications between or among members of governing body that are specifically things where they say these are not considered deliberations. So, um, but the League of Organ Cities will be recommending, don't do it anyway, so despite the fact that they're saying if they're purely factual or educational, the council didn't email, they're saying, don't. They're just saying, simply way, it's always been trained, the biggest thing is, is that now, if somebody has, wants to file a complaint, they file it with the city first. They don't go directly to the ethics commission anymore, they have to file it to the city, we have a timeframe in which we have to respond, and after um, they do all that, then somebody can take it to the ethics commission. Another piece is that the um, the governing body, the person is now individually viable. So, um, maybe that each member, um, number five, that said it's not a city violation as much as it's a person or idol violation of the. So, but when you get training, um, which I will, since, as soon as they have training available, we'll schedule to have that done. Um, it looks like they're on the track training, so it probably has to fill up the same kind of funds we do with the ethics commission annually. So those are the things I just really wanted to to point out to you, um, most everything else is the same, but those are pretty significant things that I want to make sure that, you know, so yeah, so it's personal liability for each member of the governing body. Uh, and may not be paid for or identified by the governing body or public body, so um, that's a pretty big deal for that, so that's something for people to be aware about. Um, and the other one was on the trees, uh, I provided a lot, again, I had some stuff that didn't come through, uh, we actually had a draft that I was proposing to the planning commission. For the review of, not the development code range use, there's really not, in the development code, there isn't much for um trees, it just, that one that you ran, that we ran into with this is all there is. So I reviewed Lincoln Cities, and they have a very robust plan, but they also have the individual one, which we focus on, say, for example, if I wanted to take down the big tree behind my house, and if I wanted to do it because I wanted to look out back and see more trees. Um, this type of permit would say whether or not I could do that based on the size of the tree, but if you look at this HPAK recommendations, and Eric Sherman of the planning commission has a apparently a lot of knowledge about this, and he says that. Uh, he'd like the council to really think about this and realize that if we really want to be able to govern our city for the trees we have in the city, and be able to enforce tree regulations, put together and enforce them. He said we should make sure to provide some kind of a language or, so provide something to this HPAK group, because he's pretty sure that it will get passed as it stands. So, that will tie our hands to some extent on what we will be able to do.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, going back to the uh, the HB twenty-eight oh five. Um, not long ago, on a open meetings question, I asked you if it would be appropriate for me to send the mayor a memo and to copy it to another city councillor, and you told me that no, uh, that would be too many people. Uh, involved on that, and yeah, tonight, we heard that a city councillor had attended the emergency preparedness meeting, uh, which is already, uh. I think chaired and and attended by two city councillors, how does that differ, how would I be excluded from talking to uh two, two other members of this council?
They're talking.
Yeah.
And they, well, don't they talk?
They do not.
No, they did not.
I I.
I told them they could attend and they could listen, but they did not talk.
Very good, thank you.
And Lindsay wasn't there yesterday also.
Oh, right, so there was.
Okay, moving on, yeah, um.
Any questions on the trees? It really ties our hands, because it's not right over the ornaments, and and this is what, housing, this was the thing?
Housing, this is the governor's thing that I had.
Housing, housing policy advisory.
I think council.
How it?
Thank you.
Yeah, well.
I guess my question was, do I put any more work into this? It could take another year before we get anything further on this, but we could put something in the books sooner rather than later, and then make changes when we need to, but I think our council would would wish the planning commission or us to move forward.
Mayor, may I say something about this? I did read this material, thank you for providing it, and uh, it's it's, what's going on right now is interesting, and it's worthy of a discussion, but the only thing that I'm concerned about, and that I see lacking in anything, anything here. And it is kind of addressed, but not significantly, is the matter of safety. And uh, the fact is that these large trees, you know, it talks about you can take away a small tree under twenty inches, but you've got to leave the large trees, and they're the problem, they have these killer branches. Uh, they are aging and often infirm. I know many people that have had damages to their homes uh as a result of these dangerous trees, I've covered stories in Lincoln County where people have been killed by trees falling on their, on their homes. Uh, and the damages are serious, it says it instructs people to plant trees, but then not to care for them once they are planted. Uh, and they're just another piece of shrubbery, uh, in fact, there's, there's nothing uh salient about the safety, I mean, all these people in California that lost their homes recently. Because they were surrounded by trees in their, in their personal space. Uh, I I think as we move forward, that we should really uh look at the safety side and encourage everybody to pick this up, this is down right in our office here at City Hall. On how to care for a tree, uh, instead of just letting it grow and be a problem for the entire neighborhood. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, well, um, one thing I do want to um suggest, that we saw that big loophole in that tree protection ordinance, because our definition of tree removal or removal only related if the roots were removed. So they're able to take down a tree because they can take down the roots, and certainly, if if a branch is a hazard, you know, that can be removed, but you know, uh, trees or carbon, I mean, they're, they're important. And um, so I think if nothing else, we fix our ordinance, it says you can't take a tree down unless you have a development permit, and what we mean by that, it would change the definition of, I don't remember what the wording was in our existing ordinance, but it was a loophole, because if you left the the stump. Or cut it down to the ground level, that's fine as long as you left the roots, so we need to fix that at least. And um, yeah, I would like to see a, some statement about the value of um. Of trees to aesthetics and to carbon and to wildlife and everything else, but I don't know what to do about this, it's a mess. All righty. Um, are there any closing public comments this evening?
Um, I just have one, maybe um you could just stop me, um, as far as just cleaning up from after our vote now tonight about um. Perhaps removing the signs that say no crackpots allowed, because that was really a bother with the insurance lady, um, so maybe those need to come down, and perhaps at the um harbor commission or not, or sometime in the ordinance will have to be. I don't know, will have to be changed or not, so I'm just trying to clean it up so we can take care of everything that we need to do. Good, good point.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any other comments this evening? Okay, council comments, who wants to start? All right, who wants to start this evening?
I guess the question, do we have any more of those Deepwater Bay mugs anywhere, that's right in front of you.
I don't.
We have.
Oh, that was right, you.
We have some of the uh pottery thrown like that are around, that say, say the Deepwater Bay Apple One, but none of those quite.
Um, could you put some up there, um, how much was raised at that? The line.
Is the gift fundraiser?
Over eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand one hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-six.
Congratulations.
Two hundred and seventy-six, folks did, and it was a.
How many?
Two hundred and seventy-six.
We'll have a press release.
Yeah.
That was great work, so.
It was much appreciated by the committee.
It's a lot of fun.
Your pleasure.
I have a question for Kim, um, there's gonna be a partial eclipse on October thirteenth.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, do we have any more glasses?
Yeah, we did, don't we, don't we still have more, I think I have a bunch in my office, yes, not like a ton, but a lot.
Well, it's mainly like Florence and Eugene and whatever, I'd like to pick one up.
Oh, yes, we have.
I have half a ton.
I'm sorry?
That's that's.
That's right, we do, you know.
Glasses for the uh solar, yeah, I have.
For the solar.
Five thousand.
I probably have about, close to five thousand.
Well, I'm not gonna take some, my brother and I go to Texas in April then, to have a eclipse.
We donated a lot, I don't have that many, but we donated a lot, we probably have several hundred.
Oh, wow.
But we donated a good portion of it, all they would take to the uh, to a group that was sending them to uh Australia, yeah.
Okay. So the ones you have left, remember that controversy, that some of them were not protected?
Okay.
In other words, there was a list of.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, so we had to check which ones you have, people could have gotten blinded, they were using ones that we realized weren't approved. It's on, it was on the one, long time ago, I don't remember the details.
Yeah, we have the the last batch is what we, I think those were eliminated, yeah, we did audit those at the time.
Okay.
And these have been in a tote, not exposed to any sunlight.
So we can use them for welding.
Did you have anything to say, and did you have any?
No, I don't.
Okay, we are done, thank you very much.
Um, did you, did you enjoy the, the way we went in there, um, the secret areas?
Yes, very much so.
Funny, the time is. I don't have a horse, I don't want to.
I can have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we're good now.
Yeah, yeah.
I love your jackets, thank you.
For that, yeah.
A little bit too excited for fall, and it's a little warm today. It is warm today.
Hi, everybody, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.